Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Zion City Hall. We like to call this Zion City Council Meeting of September 1st, 2020, to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Present.
Commissioner Farson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Mr. Bremner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
In signing the Pledge of Allegiance to a flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
We're in retirement here tonight. I feel like they can see.
Leading us in prayer this evening is Carl Williamson,
who is the head chaplain at the Cancer Treatment Center of America.
Dear Mayor McKinney and other city council members and the citizens of Zion, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to pray. A cry out to God, let's pray. Our Father, who is in heaven, you are so far above the earth with a sovereign view of all that is happening in our city of Zion, in the city of Kenosha, and our divided nation. And yet, you are a personal God that cares about us all, right here and right now. The pain, the confusion, the angst, the anger, the death, and the life. I want to give you honor as you deserve, as I, as we call on you tonight. Praise be to the God of heaven, the heavens and the earth, the ruler over all creation and mankind, who knows the hearts of man, their highest achievements and their lowest of lows. You are the lover of our souls. You are the redeemer. You take what is broken, mend it, and make it new, using it for your perfect purpose. You are a God of justice, and vengeance is in your hands. Cry out to the Lord with me. Cry out to the Lord with me that he would bring healing to the people of our cities across our nation. Lord, you alone will be our Savior. Life without God is empty and self-seeking. God made us, and he wants us to have life and to have it more abundantly. We can have a better life in our cities, but God is the way to true joy in your heart, in our communities, and every city in our nation. Cry out to the Lord with me. Cry out to the Lord with me that we would have peace in our hearts, peace among our neighbors, peace among our leaders, and peace with our enemies. Peace is not just a sign, it's a state of being. Let God help you with finding peace. People will try to take away our peace, but we must not let that happen. God, help us to be peacemakers and guardians. And lastly, cry out to the Lord with me. Cry out to the Lord with me that we may have wisdom from above. We all seek knowledge. We seek our own knowledge, which is minute and measly. Instead, we must seek our God's wisdom. We will have to be humble ourselves. If any of us lacks wisdom, we should ask of God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to all. God knows all about our trials we have encountered. He knows what temptations we have faced, and he knows the pain and the suffering we will face in the future. You, God, are the answer to our cries for wisdom, peace, and healing. Remember, the sovereign God of heaven and earth is not oblivious to our circumstances. He knows our valley lows, how hard your fight has been, how deep the pain is. He knows that your wounds, that the wounds that no one else has seen, and hurts too much to show. He knows. Cry out to God. He knows. In my Savior's name, Jesus Christ, I cry out. Amen.
I think there was a lot said in that prayer. I think if I was going to add anything to that in the moment of silence I usually ask for is, we've lost people in our community, a community close to us, that we have a moment of silence to get rid of the hatred and the heartiness in the hearts of the people that look to divide us as a city and as a nation. And if we're going to move forward in a positive direction with life and being citizens of the United States of America, not the divided states of America, we have to remove that hate and that cancer from within our community. So I'd ask for a moment of silence for all those who have lost people that have dear to them, for our first responders who have been involved with so much throughout the week. Thank you. Item number four. Does Commissioner have any agenda changes? Is there a motion to present the agenda as presented? Does she move? Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please follow the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Item number five is citizen comments. We have a lot of citizen comments tonight. And as usual, just go through the rules of citizen comments. Each citizen has three minutes to make their comments. Typically, while we don't respond to the comments afterwards, there's usually some kind of comments during the departmental commentary so that we can move along with the city business. First person, Peggy Hardy from Zion.
Good evening. I'm here today because I own a property off of 19th Street in Zion. And I have a neighbor that has a sump pump that is creating a water issue on my property. I called the city back in April, spoke with Bob Serrano, and he came out, said that he would talk to them during the time he came out. And said that, he also said, "Oh, that's so-and-so. She runs so-and-so. Oh, yeah, I remember her husband when they bought the house." And so they're friends. It's September. I've spoken with my neighbors. I've spoken. Nothing has been done. So today, I had to spend like $125 to get this area cleared out because of their water issue. When it's cleared out, it's mice over there. I called again, back to the city. Thank you, Commissioner Jackie, because I did end up speaking with her. But in return, I got a call back from Bob Serrano. And his phone call was, "Hi, this is Bob from the city of Zion. What's your problem with the water?" And I said, "Excuse me?" He says, "You're calling people and leaving them voicemails. You called my boss, and it was transferred to me." And I said, "Correct." I said, "You were out here in April. I have this problem. It's still here, and nothing has been done about it." And he says, "Well, there's someone working there now." I said, "Where?" I said, "Per ordinance, this sump pump drain is supposed to go underneath the ground and away from my property. You came out, you inspected, and nothing has been done. I'm sitting here, and I'm looking out my back door, and there's no one working on it. As a matter of fact, how do you know? Did you just call your friend and tell him that I complained again?" And he goes off, and I said, "You know what? I'm done. We'll go somewhere else." And I said, "I'll call the commissioner back." And he says, "Well, fine then. Do it," and hung up on me. So today, I'm here because the rudeness of the city workers that we have in Zion. He's not the first. There's another one that came out, inspected my property for the covert I needed to have retrenched. And his nastiness of telling me, I told him his guys had came out and did this, and he says, "No, they didn't. And if they did, they're idiots." But I don't like to call my guys idiots. I said, "Well, this is what your guys did. I need this problem solved because there's water sitting next to my house in the covert all year round, and nothing has been done about it." But the attitudes that I get from the city workers when I call, when I speak about something that is citywide, I should not have an attitude as a citizen that is paying my property taxes and living here and trying to take care of my property correctly. I shouldn't have an attitude. I shouldn't have to go through these issues with them at all. And then with the sump pump thing, you know, I explained to him, "You guys did nothing to your friends, but other people in the community, you find them or tell them, 'You got two weeks to fix it.' My aunt, you got two weeks to fix it or else you're going to get fined. Why didn't that happen with my neighbor? Oh, because they're friends?" So it's the inconsistency of the people around here of, "You're showing favoritism to your friends. You're not finding them, you're not doing anything to them. But I have to suffer? That's all I have."
Okay, thank you.
It's going to be hard. Mayor McKinney, City Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of my family and my nephew who was killed over the weekend in Zion. We have been residents in Zion since 1969. We've had our children born here. Our parents both died here. We've given birth, we've had people die, but never anybody died violently. We've had so many young men die in Zion unanswered. We're not going to let this one go unanswered. We're not hellraisers, but we're Lear's, and we're not going to let this go unanswered. We're going to have justice for my nephew one way or the other. Months ago, I asked the commission, the city, "Why are the streets so dark? It's like rural Mississippi down there. You can't see your hand in front of your face. That's not preventing crime. That's helping them. We got to do something to save these children up here. Can't lose any more babies. I don't know what else to say. I love this city. And you know I have love and respect for you, but we got to do something to save these children. Keep having, if I'm right, over 31 shell casings from that crime scene, if I read correctly. Over 30 shell casings. This is ridiculous. This was in a neighborhood where a child was shot. What are we going to do next? Wait till it hits one of your homes, or one of your wives, or your kids? What's next? We've got to do something in this city. We got to do something. I asked you months ago about the low housing people. We wait three months, we wait to apply a person, gets three complaints to notify the landlord. Anytime there's a complaint, a land short should be notified. Most of these mothers, and Lord knows, I've been on Section 8. They got men's, they got pit bulls. I'm a taxpayer too, but I don't want to pay for that shit, and I'm sorry. I'm tired. I am tired, and we got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm part of the Lear family. I am very, very, very hurt. I've been here all my life. That corner where my nephew got killed, that is a very bad corner, and it's been like that for years. That alley has been bad for years. And I know there's a surveillance camera over there. All I want is justice for my nephew. Please, help us get justice. That's all we want. We don't want the violence. Stop the violence. Just give us justice. That's all we want. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'd like to say my comments probably don't mean nothing after I heard the other two, so it seems trivial. But I'm here to lodge my complaint. I wasn't up here for three minutes and badmouthed the city and the building department, but that doesn't get me anywhere. But I do want to say that after speaking to the lawyer, you, Mr. Mayor, and the building director, I don't believe that I was given a fair shake as far as how I was talked to. If a citizen has a question for a lawyer and it's not answered, and your response is, "I don't know why you're not getting this," I don't think that's a fair way to talk to a taxpayer. Because I asked a question, my question hasn't answered. What is the intended use of the room? Who decides that? Does the city decide that, or does the homeowner decide that? And that question's not been answered. And to say things like, "I don't know why you're not getting this. I don't mean to dismiss you." You shouldn't talk to a citizen like that of the city of Zion, especially if you don't live in the city. I don't know if he lives in the city or not. Highly doubt it. But I think that's wrong for somebody to talk to me like that on the phone. My last parting comments is that I'm trying to comply. I understand what was said to me. I'm going to do what I have to do. But I tried to pull a building permit. Since I don't live in the house, I can't even do work to come in compliance. So I got to pay more money to even work on a house that I own and try to come in compliance with you. It seems like every avenue I'm trying to go to do in compliance with the city, I'm wanting to more, I got to pay more money. So to work on the own house that me and my wife own, I have to be a general contractor. But I own the house. I'll do the work, but then the work I can't do, I want to pay somebody to do it. But if I have to dig a hole for the window, I rather want to dig the hole myself than pay somebody. I get a shovel. I'll spend a couple hours out there until I get the hole set right, until I have to do to get it right, and then pay somebody to cut the window, put the window in, then pay somebody to drain it. I'll do the work I have to do, but I have to pull a permit. I don't own the city. Then I got to become a general contractor. I mean, that's why I pay insurance on the home. But now I got to get another insurance. It's going to cost me $2,000 to become a general contractor to earn for one job. Come on. How many avenues I got to go through to become compliant? It seems like you say that the city's not against me, but I feel like it is. When I'm trying to comply, you tell me I got to do this, I'm going to do it. But then I try to come to compliance, I got to spend all this other money. Yes, I work a lot of jobs, but I don't have to keep money like that. And I understand what you guys are trying to do, Mr. Mayor. You're trying to push the city for it. But, man, you got to do something for these citizens. And I close with this and saying, "You guys, it's a hard job. I know you can't make everybody happy. I understand that. But at least give us some leeway for people who own homes that are trying to do things, but to keep paying and paying on stuff, that's it. But thank you for your service, everybody, and have a great night."
Thank you. Okay. Janet Lear?
While we wait for any of the Lear's, I will say this. It's definitely a tragedy that that happened. I am indirectly related to them, and the great nephew who's a Lear that I am currently rearing, I hope to God nothing happens to him like that.
I suspect that recent events, the violence of the last week are on most of our minds. When we discuss these events, we usually omit a discussion of the most vulnerable, the children. Jacob Blake's three children witnessed the shooting at close range. How will they cope with this the rest of their lives? Children are the silent observers of community violence. This is even more so in African-American and Hispanic communities due to the disproportionate amount of policing in their neighborhoods. When arrest, jail, or death separate children from their parents, the stress can affect their health into their adult life. Witnessing police violence shapes how children see themselves. It can taint their racial identity. There is also a strong correlation between violence and student achievement. If we want our children to feel better about themselves and to perform better in school, we need to make them feel safe. I know the city has a deficit, and we don't have extra funds. But if you could obtain grant funding, would you consider investing it in de-escalation training for the police officers? I'm asking this as a proactive move, not as a criticism of our police. Let's learn to resolve conflict without violence. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor. First of all, I want to give condolences to the Lear family that just left. Also, want to give condolences out to a longtime Zion resident, passed out to G. Gas, who passed away. One of our Zion residents. You know, five years ago, I saw a lot, and I didn't present it very well. I was a bully. I came in, I upset at meetings and things like that. But I saw the vision that I was trying to get to. And I founded the movement of Black Lives Matter. And, man, the people beat me up. "It wouldn't work. It won't do nothing. We ain't going to be peaceful. We going to beat thugs and hootlums, and we trying to start a gang." I proved everybody wrong. You know, we never got a grant, never asked for a grant. Y'all know I donation you to death. You know, that idea do. And we got to do... You know, but safety always been our main thing. You know, we shut down some stuff. And the purpose of a protest is our constitutional right. And the safety of it is, is that the purpose of the protest is to make people mad so they can call y'all, who are the mayor and the chief of police and everybody. So y'all can say, "Well, hey, y'all need to stop this." And whatever reason that we out there, that, you know, the money. That's why they in Chicago. They go to Michigan Avenue, because that's where the money at. This week, we had an incident last Sunday in Kenosha. I was there 30 minutes after that brother was shot, seven times. Was there at 12 o'clock. The neighborhood got rowdy. Police got knocked out and everything. Everybody was a little rowdy, but we was able to calm it down and everything like that so it didn't get outside. I told them, "We'll be here tomorrow. We start protesting." We protested. Of course, the press never did mention a peaceful protest. Every time you turn on the news, all you saw was destruction and everything. Since Black Lives Matter called the protest, they say Black Lives Matter was doing it. And I'm going to tell you, I'm too old. I ain't ready to burn nothing up, and I ain't getting ready to loot nothing. I work hard for mine, you know. So, you know, of course, the press did their thing. Thing that got me was that I do safety. And since I be mostly in front with the bullhorn, I have people around me to watch my back because there is people that comes... I got to get this out, okay? I'm the last speaker, so... There are people around you that have drug needles that act like they protesters, and they walk by and bump into you, and they stick you with drugs and stuff like that. We aware of all that. So I have bodyguards around me when I'm out protesting. I've been to many protests. I've been all over the country. You know, I've never seen a white malicious group come out. And when they came out with their guns and everything, I did the peaceful thing. I went up to them and asked them, "Hey, y'all want to march with us?" And one of the young men that was killed Tuesday was by my side. He was my bodyguard as we was protesting. Peaceful young man riding a skateboard. You know what I'm saying? That's all he did. He stopped the traffic. When we coming up to a street, he would ride a skateboard up to stop the cars so we could do, you know, we can get past, and the people keep us safe. Today, our President of the United States came through Zion. I thought we had accomplished something. You know, in the five years, I thought we at least accomplished something. Some things I knew racism would never go away just in five years because you can't take 401 years of racism and wash it out in five years. But I didn't think some things would be said. And what was said to me today, and it was live, and I know some of y'all saw my live today. God told me, "Well, if you don't like it, go back to Africa." Five years ago, I'd have been going to jail. You know, but I didn't calm down a little bit. But I had to say, in my hometown where I live at, for somebody to tell me today to go back to Africa, I was really hurt and disturbed, and I was just glad that I had enough intelligence to just put my head down. And it was some Afro-Americans that was there, and they handling it because the old Clyde wanted to, you know, roar up and act the fool. I just say, "Man, what is going on with our country? What is going on with our country? What's going on with our city? Right here in Zion, Illinois? I'm just as much a citizen. I've been here 25 years. I'm a citizen of here. I might, some people, everybody ain't got to like me. But to tell me to go back to Africa? I was, I mean, I've been to Africa before, but that was through my choice. My ancestors didn't come here, you know. And I just had to say that, man, that I... It's been, because I felt this small when he said it to me, because I couldn't hit him. Because if I hit him, that's what they say. "Oh, see, I told y'all, they ain't nothing but hoolums and thugs." But I felt this small. Because I ain't got the college degree, so I can't come back to speak like that. I couldn't spit on them, but I just wanted to say, "What a..." Man, what's happening with our city? What's really happening with the city? What can I do? What can I do to help our city come back to being a city, man? Every city in here got a Bible name. What can I do? Just tell me. Y'all got my number. Y'all know how to get in touch with me. Everybody here, please tell me. I'm sorry to hold you up, but I had to say that.
Thank you, Clyde. Item number six, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of regular meeting held on August 18, 2020 at 7:00 p.m.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please follow the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills, vouchers 135611 through 135725 drawn on Huntington National Bank.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please follow the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Farson?
I'm staying.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number seven, consider passing ordinance as follows. Item 7A, authorizing and approving a settlement and release agreement between the city of Zion and North Shore Gas Company per administrative name.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, for a couple of years, we... A couple of years ago, we contracted with Azebar to do a revenue audit where they look at utility companies, utility tax, phone, addresses, et cetera, to make sure that we're getting everything that we should be. As a result of that, they actually found that North Shore Gas, based on addresses, had failed to remit some of those taxes to us. They went after, as allows our law and statute, basically interest on that back payment. The settlement agreement is us just entering into an agreement with them, saying that the $34,000... the thirty-four thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars that they found pays in full all back amounts owed. They didn't argue that they're paying a hundred percent of what was owed. We just have to agree that that's what we're going for on this. So I would recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
There was one spot on page one, I'm not sure if the words were inverted, but it says gas gross. Wasn't sure if that was supposed to be gross gas receipts.
It probably was. Wait, can I, can I ask what, first page, where at?
One, two, three, fourth section of whereas.
Yeah. Should be gross gas receipts.
Yeah.
We'll make that change before final execution of it.
Other questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item seven B, authorizing and approving a proposal and work agreement between the City of Zion and Deacon and Associates LLC for the City of Zion per Administrator Nathan.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. D and C are related, but we'll handle them one at a time. A couple of meetings ago, we approved the acceptance of a donation of property pending due diligence for environmental inspection. We also approved, us going forward, city staff going forward with scheduling and due diligence for those items, because of the time constraints we were under, provided that we come back and ratify those agreements. The first one you have here is for a Phase Two environmental site assessment. Basically, they're gonna go do some soil borings and samplings on some areas that might be of concern during the inspection. We recommended that they go forward with that, and upon execution, the total amount of this Phase Two is eleven thousand seven hundred dollars, which is quite a deal for a Phase Two. So I would recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Your second.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item seven C, authorizing and approving a contract for land surveying services between the City of Zion and Peckley Surveying Company, L T D for the City of Zion per Administrator Nathan.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. For that same property, we are working with Peckley Surveying to get an alte survey for the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars, and that's just to make sure all property lines and everything are recorded properly for title and all the real estate transaction information. So I would recommend approval as presented.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number seven D, amending chapter two of the Zion Municipal Code regarding salaries of elected officials per Administrator Nathan.
Thank you again. What you have before you is, as you mentioned, salaries for elected officials. We're required to do this a hundred and eighty days, establish it a hundred and eighty days before any general election for positions. That would be October, but we figure we just get it out of the way now. What's presented in here for, to be effective made first, two thousand twenty-one, is no change in what is currently part of the city code.
Is there a motion to approve, amending chapter two of the Zion Municipal Code?
So moved.
Second.
Are there comments or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number eight, discussion authorization and approval. Eight A, consider proposed from Chicago Communications, consider proposal from Chicago Communications for the purchase of bidirectional amplifier, external antenna, and two omnidirectional servers, server antennas per Chief Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. What you have before you is a proposal to improve the radio reception and transmission for our new Starcom radios, which don't function well, with a lot of concrete around them, especially underground. This was something we anticipated might come up, but wasn't really realized until we activated the Starcom network. So Chicago Communications came out, took a look at our site, and ordered us this thirteen thousand six hundred eighty-three dollar and thirty-eight cents cost to provide that bidirectional amp and the two server antennas. Good news about that, it's fully reimbursable through our joint nine-nine-one board, so it would simply be us paying upfront and then being reimbursed at the next quarterly meeting in November.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item eight B, consider approval of purchase of three new tasers, a dock, batteries, holsters, and cartridges per Chief Henderson.
Again, Mayor, Commissioners, this is a request to do just that. We have, as you know, last year, put three detectives in the Lake County Special Investigations Group. Those detectives work out of the county building often and do not have access to the tasers that we have in stock, and a lot of times they go directly there. That means they are not equipped with tasers, which are an intermediate force weapon between pepper spray and a handgun. This purchase would allow us to equip those officers with this necessary intermediary tool, and still not deplete this, the stock of tasers that we have for our officers here on patrol. My proposal is to take this seven thousand two hundred twenty-two dollar and fifty cent purchase out of the drug fund, which is a dedicated fund, and this is an approved use of that, so we're gonna pack the city's budget.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number nine, departmental commentary. Director Ianson is not here this evening, nor is our Human Resources Director Karen Graves or Director Ray Roberts. Administrator Nathan, you haven't had much to say this evening, you have anything to add?
Been hearing from me since five-thirty today, so, the three directors were not here at my request, just based on not having things on the agenda, just to try to keep everyone safe. I thought it was not necessarily gonna become, I recommended that they stay home, not because they didn't want to be here at the meeting. So they had nothing for me to pass on immediately. I will say the same thing that you're gonna hear from me from now to the end of October at every meeting. Please make sure you get your census forms filled out. The deadline for that was extended, it's not too late. We also have a census incentive program that if you complete your census, on our website, you have instructions on how to submit proof for that, and you get entered into a drawing every month. We're gonna be having our drawing for August at the end of this week, but you can still enter for September and October. There's three prizes, a three hundred, two hundred, and a one hundred dollar Visa gift card. If you don't win in the drawing at the end of this week and you submitted prior, you, your entry will be carried over for two more chances. So if you get in now, you can still get September and October chance. So it affects a lot of things for the future, for the next ten years. Those census numbers come into play for per capita revenue, for state, federal aid, transportation, a whole lineage of areas. So if you don't get your numbers on there, you won't be heard. Between voting and your census, that's the best voice you can have for the future of our city, state, and country, so. That's it.
All right. Chief Henderson?
Well, I'll try to carry the water for the rest of the department heads, again. Two things. Kathy, to address your point about de-escalation training, the state does mandate that at a certain, I believe it's every three years. Officers get that kind of in ones and twos, as they sign up for classes, they fill up very quickly. So back in July, we, at a council meeting, did approve bringing the class actually to our department, at a cost of just under three thousand dollars. We moved some ammunition purchases to the drug fund and reallocated those funds from the budget, so we don't have a budget impact. And we'll have one class here for half of our department, a few of the council members, members of our Citizens Advisory Committee, on September sixteenth, and the second one, covering the rest of the department, will be on October sixth. So, yep, that stuff is coming. And the last thing, I just want to say a couple of big thank yous. First of all, to ESDA, who helped us out tremendously. Sunday night, I had a call from the state police, letting us know that President Trump would be landing at Wall Keegan and be coming through Zion. Question was Sheridan, Rover, Lewis, we were involved in the planning with that. ESDA was very late in that notification, worked until two A.M. this morning to preset barricades for us, supplied us with four vehicles, maybe five, and personnel as well. Chief Lewis provided an extra ambulance crew to be stationed at Station Two in case any of the officers have a medical emergency. Director Roberts provided three of their big dump trucks to help us block roads. And then we had basically every officer from the department in working today. And midnight officers get some sleep in a chair from your car, because you're scheduled to be here at ten tonight. And I can't tell you how proud I am of the way we performed. This badge has no political affinity, doesn't show preference to race, creed, color, sex, religion, and I think we exemplified that today. I think we look very professional, and we dealt with both detractors and supporters of our current president, and hopefully, I believe, carried that up a very professional job, and very appreciative of them. And I want to say a special thanks to Lieutenant Valardi, who had the responsibility of assigning people and squads to do. I think we covered forty-nine check posts, that we had to secure every driveway, every intersection. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I don't want to put you on the spot, so why am I? But with the, the incident last weekend, I mean, I've known, grown up with the Leirs here, and it's one of the concerns that we've shared in this community, that we've talked about gun violence, which has no, no place here. And I've talked with residents in my neighborhood about it as well. But for all of those who might watch this or hear, could you just let us know, as I do, that when things happen in our community of these natures, how hard your staff works at finding the perpetrators? And one of the things that we need with this, when incidents happen like this in our community, is the help of our citizens. And there are times when incidents happen, people know who the perpetrators are. Give you a prime example, maybe this was two or three years ago, there was a party on the corner of Thirtyth and Engaver, or Ezra. A teenager was shot at a teenage party. People knew who did it, and yet no one has come forward. So, Mr. Macklemore, when you talk about things that can change our community or shape our community, and I think we're all in agreement with this, we've gotta have, I was talking to the Lear family prior to the city council meeting, and they said, we want the old Zion back. And the old Zion that I know, and that, that vision that you're talking about, that we're trying to build here, is a one that cares for your neighbors whether you know them or not, regardless of race, creed, color, nationality, gender, sexual preference. If we're gonna be the community that I know we can be, that we have been and are moving toward, that's the kind of help we need. The violence, Denise Lear talked about, well, if it happens in your neighborhood, it's happened in mine. Five years ago, as a commissioner, I was on the road and received a call from Chief Dumian about a gunfight that happened to go past my house. And when I looked at my video camera, I was on the road, there were probably five or ten officers looking for gunshot shells in my yardway, in my house. So it doesn't have to happen in your neighborhood for any of us up here to be concerned. Commissioner McDowell, we talk every week about this. Your constituents at your church ask, what are we doing about gun violence? Commissioner McPherson has been in your neighborhood where these incidents have happened. Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Holmes, our website designer, it's happened. Residents, innocent residents are being involved in senseless violence because somebody has a beef with somebody else, and they don't have the decency to think about the other people that they could be impacting. There's gotta be a way to work it out, other than gun violence. But I can tell you this, this is something that, public safety during my campaign, I talked about being at the top of the list with public safety, economic development with this community. We've gotta get that covered. We're still working, because of COVID, we're still working on that Ring program, more people are signing up for it, you see more events reported, but there's nothing like having that network of people that will let you know what's going on in your neighborhood. And there's so many ways today with our technology. People call me and say, I don't want to talk to the police or let anybody know that I was involved in this. There's all kinds of ways to communicate with city officials, our police department, without being identified. But we have to have people stand up and speak up and step up if we want to have the kind of safety in our community that we all deserve as taxpayers. The other item, Ms. Hardy and Mr. White, when I hear about rudeness from our city employees in terms of phone calls, this is something that I've heard regularly as a commissioner, that we always try to hear both sides of the story. And I have to say, I'm not making excuses for anyone. I apologize for anyone that's felt disrespected when they've had a discussion with people in our City of Zion department, City of Zion, in any of our departments. That's not the way we want to operate. So I will apologize in advance. We will deal with these issues. We thank you for, thank you for bringing it to our attention. And one of the things that, again, just being a resident here and growing, growing up here for so many years, we all understand that, before I became mayor or even commissioner, I understand there's a way that I want it to be communicated with when I talk to city officials or anyone in my neighborhood. But I also know during this time, there's a way that our employees want to be, would like to be talked to as well. Doesn't always happen. And I would say this, this last six months has been brutal for every one of us, as we've been cooped up in our homes and dealing with COVID and not being able to participate in the activities which we all enjoy and cherish. So tempers are short. Things that are happening in Kenosha, in Chicago, the senseless violence of people going out to a pancake house on the southwest side, and forty people getting shot, is absolutely ridiculous. Chicago has, what, five hundred homicides this year, which is almost twice as many as they had the prior year at the same time. So this beast of violence, and Pastor Williamson, you talked about this, the hardness and the hatred in people's hearts, the comments that come out. This is an ugly period in our, in our country's history. And I said it at the opening, we have to do more as residents on our regional level to make this the United States of America, not the divided states. Mr. Macklemore, you talk about the comments that you received today when you were out. Well, think about the comments that I received from the supporters of the man that ran against me during the election. This is 2020, not 1890. And I had to endure and hear every kind of microaggression, racist comment to lead the city. So it happens. It happens when people get in political races, it happens on every single level, and it's absolutely sickening that it's happening in 2020. But if we want a hand in changing this, it's gotta start in our hearts. It starts in our hearts, it forms in our thoughts, it becomes our words, and everybody knows this, it becomes our actions. So the fact that you didn't retaliate, and I didn't retaliate the way I wanted to, So the fact that you didn't retaliate, and I didn't retaliate the way I wanted to, that's tough. But this is happening all over the United States right now, and it's a sickening environment to be in. This is not what our country represents. We're bigger than this, we're bigger, we're bigger and we're better than this. So if we can make a commitment with the people that are here, which I don't have to ask you that, because you're here on a regular basis, but to those in our community, we've gotta get that message out from all of us. It can't be just the five sitting here. It can't be just 120 city employees that go out every day and face. We've got 25,000 citizens, and they've gotta start turning some of that love back into this community so that we can enjoy it the way we've done in the past.
Item number 10, announcements. Commissioner?
I'm sorry. So I usually don't enter anything for the record, and I mean, because a lot of things have been already, you know, laid out here by the mayor, the chief, the pastor. But I did want to take a moment, just because it's hit me real hard over this past week and this year, and just trying to really culminate and digest all of the thoughts that I had. So I had a personal statement that I wanted to read to the council and all of you. It's been just over a year since I've been appointed to the position to serve as Commissioner for the Police and Fire Rescue Divisions of this city. And in that time, it's been trying to deal with personnel and budget issues, and watched the chief struggle to manage equipment needs, keep service levels up and overtime down as not to tax an already strained budget. And for those that have had the chance to get to know me, you know that I will man a few words and speak out of necessity, and don't feel it necessary just to hear myself speak because I hold this title. And with that said, this has been a trying year for the reasons previously stated, and the torment of watching events unfold across this nation that spark fear, anger, triggering stress and pain for our residents, myself included. This week yet again has been laid bare that our residents are on edge, wanting to know, do we have a plan to protect our community? What if the rioters and the looters come here? Others wondering, will one of our residents, my son, or brother, or father, or daughter, or mother, be next to be killed by some interaction going on a riot? Residents are looking at national media and hating, blaming, judging based on things happening at their neighbor's home. I'm not here to debate or try any event in the court of public opinion. I would like to bring your attention back to Zion, though, and to that extent, we are in this shitstorm together. And hating, judging your neighbor will ensure that things get worse before they can get better. So I ask you to put your phones down and talk to your neighbor. See if they have lost a job or a loved one this year. Are they struggling with homeschooling? Are they down on daycare because they can't bear risk sending children to their elder grandparents for daycare? Are they going through relationship struggles because of stress of finances or some coping substances that went too far? And to be even more direct, stop hating your neighbor based on tweets and Facebook posts that are false and unverified. I realize that we have had several shootings in our town. The tragedy of local violence is not lost on me. We do have a professional police department, and part of my duty in this position, along with the Board of Police and Fire, is to ensure that they are meeting the high standards in place and those that we need to raise after we continue our reviews. Our department is working hard internally and with surrounding departments to investigate and arrest the perpetrators. The mayor recently released a statement highlighting the number of guns that have been removed from the street. Our men and women are working around the clock to keep up patrols in the newly created districts. The number of detectives have been expanded to allow for more comprehensive investigations. And for our residents that are concerned and fearful of an interaction with an officer for their children or themselves, and are wondering how do we stack up against some of the legislation being pushed for in other places? The chief and I have been working to review and implement new policies where necessary. There are several reforms being pushed at the national level, so I want to bring your attention to some local standards that we have in place here. One, chokeholds and strangleholds are banned for our department. Our use of force policy has eight tactics and tools defined above deadly use of force, and a list of restrictions when deadly use of force should not be used when less force is sufficient to effect an arrest. Our policy also includes a duty to intervene for our officers. We have a comprehensive reporting system and a review process for all reports of excessive use of force. Our officers are equipped with body cameras as well as squad cars. Our officers do receive de-escalation training. I believe that's been mentioned, it's per state requirements. Myself and the H R director and members of the Citizens Advisory Board will be sitting in on upcoming sessions to get a greater understanding of what's involved so that we can be knowledgeable of existing content and have future dialogue to inform any recommendations to update the training. We're also working on the use of the reporting to leverage data to help us highlight any additional disparities that may not be apparent as our officers go about the day to day. These are just some of the items that we've been working to address. This is not to imply perfection by any means. Just like the law, a policy is only as good as we enforce them. I've been actively reviewing since my time here and hope to leave some lasting incremental change before my term is up. This is just the beginning, and we need the partnership of our residents to get to know your neighborhoods. We're not asking you to put yourselves in harm's way, but if situations are that dire, call our officers so that we can alert the sergeants, put a plan in place to address it. Take notice of strange activity and notify crime stoppers. Get a Ring camera on your doorbell or garage or alleyway. For those circumstances where you just maybe haven't taken the time to introduce yourself, bake some cookies, have a beer, let them know what type of town Zion has been and strives to be. Additionally, trust and believe that I and others are here to take your feedback to inform how we can be better and continue to raise our quality of life here in the city. We make Zion home by interacting with each other, live and in person, taking accountability for what's right outside our front door. We have to be willing to listen and learn from one another. And to those that may still struggle to understand the unrest that we are witnessing, it has been a long time in the making, and for no other reason based on the genesis of the formation of policing, coupled with the systemic racism that this country was built upon, what constitutes social and public order depends largely on who is defining those terms. Historically, that has been white male elites, defining it for communities that they didn't live in but profited from. And as a general resident of any city or town that has a police force with a proven track record of racism and oppression, those residents are made complicit to finance their own murder by the way the system is designed because their tax dollars fund salaries and pensions and equipment for persons that they feel blatantly disregard their lives. One of the more recent changes in this legislation is marijuana. It was never a moral transgression, but for decades, we allowed a system to lock up residents for substantial amounts of time. And with the power of a pen being held by elite white males, it's no longer a punitive offense. The presence of mass media takes over the narrative and doesn't provide room for reasonable dialogue on what is just and fair. As a society, we've largely ignored the impact that this has had on our society. I don't have all the answers for how we should move forward, but a reckoning is upon us, and we have a decision to make. Will we divide ourselves so much that we enter into another uncivil war? Or will we humble ourselves enough to take off the blinders and acknowledge that what gave some a sense of security and wealth only served the few and not the many? This generation in particular can clearly see the inequities, and even more so, the disingenuous attitudes and patronizing sentiments can be felt stronger than ever. The voices are too loud to ignore. So I'll leave you with this reference. I was a young husband and father when I moved to Zion, and we bought a home that was condemned and had busted pipes and crumbling walls, diseased trees, and so much more. Needless to say, the yard was not my first priority at the time, and I had a neighbor that hated dandelions. My lawn had plenty of those and tall grass to boot. I received a threatening letter from the city because the neighbor had turned me in for being a derelict property owner. So I cut the grass before the week was up because I couldn't afford any additional expenses. So weeks later, I got a chance to meet the neighbor, and we exchanged stories and set some expectations. I agreed to try and keep the dandelions under control, and she baked us cookies. From time to time, when I didn't spray the yard, she would come by with her knife and show me how to pluck the dandelions. My whole family grew very fond of her and remember her as the best neighbor we've ever had. She was proud to live here, and it showed, and she made sure that anyone that came to our block understood and that we had a standard and should strive to meet. And so lastly, there's one thing I would like everyone to join me with. So I'll say and repeat after me. No matter how open-minded and socially conscious,
No matter how open-minded and socially conscious.
Anti-racist, I think I am.
Anti-racist, I think I am.
I still have old, learned, hidden biases
I still have old, learned, hidden biases.
That I need to examine.
That I need to examine.
It is my responsibility to check myself daily
It is my responsibility to check myself daily.
For my stereotypes, prejudice, and ultimately discrimination.
My stereotypes, prejudices, and ultimately discrimination.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners having to come?
Just lastly, to Mr. Macklemore's comment, although my mom and dad told me it's not what they call you, it's what you respond to, it still hurts.
Item number 10, announcements. September 7th, city offices will be closed for the holiday, and we wish everyone a happy Labor Day. September 15th at 6:00 p.m., there's a Zion Township Board meeting. And September 15th at 7:00 p.m., a Zion City Council meeting. And believe it or not, it's just the first day of September, we're already talking about October 6th and 7:00 p.m., Zion City Council meeting. Let's all be safe, let's go out of here with open minds and open hearts, and let's all improve our communities. This community. Number 11, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Just second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireston?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell? Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Kennedy?
Aye.
Thank you, and everybody travel home safely.